Um, let's see. So just a reminder, the signature files downstairs are being swung by when you're here. 2021-22 budget scheduled discussion.
Is that led by you?
It is.
Okay.
All right. So everybody should have a copy of what our proposal is coming forward with the budgets for fiscal year 2122. So we, as we go down through, we've already gotten all the proposed budgets in. We're still working on a few numbers. Kathy is looking at them now. And let's see, they'll be to the Budget Committee by the 26th. And then the Budget Committee will create their own formulation of meetings. Recommended November 16th, 30th, and February, sorry, December 7th. And then the selectmen, these are additional meetings. Make sure that you keep these on your calendar. December 14th, December 21st. January 25th is our first public hearing on the budget.
Say 25th.
Yeah, 25th, yep. And then February 4th is the final or second public hearing and finalization of the warrants.
What time are those budget meetings, Dan?
They're usually during the regular selectmen's meetings, like by 6:15.
Okay.
That's what we try to do anyway.
They're not an additional meeting.
I'm assuming they have these budget meetings on Zoom?
We might have to. It depends because we usually have 30 people sometimes in the room and we can't do that, I don't think. So we still have the CIP Committee. Again, as you just go down through. February 2nd through the 8th is when we finalize the warrant. And then it talks about when the selectmen have to post it. There's all kinds of dates through here that we're running through for our election day is on March 9th. The town meeting on March 10th. Town meeting might look a little different this year, maybe. I don't know.
Who's going to be moderator?
I'm sorry?
Who's moderator this year at the town?
It's still Bob Clay.
Oh, I thought he'd be tired completely.
Nope, nope.
I think it's his last one.
Okay.
No, we're not allowing him to retire.
I agree.
It goes for Steve, too.
And with regards to the meeting dates, the governor extended the emergency order that he declared back in March. That was extended on Friday for an additional 21 days, which means you're exempt from holding in-person meetings and that exemption continues through the 21-day period from October 9th. And I'm sure we'll see another executive order. This one was 2020-20. I'm sure within the 21 days, we'll see 2020-21, which extends it even further.
Okay. Just make sure you, if you see any, Scott, come through, just make sure you ship us off an email. Just keeping us updated of those extensions.
Yeah, I will. I did send Kathy an email this morning, not knowing that she would be out, but I will forward that to you tomorrow, Ann, because it also updates the safer-at-home guidelines that were updated on October 6th.
She is checking her emails, so you may get a response from her.
Okay.
But she is checking that, so.
What is our Zoom limit?
Our Zoom limit is 150. So I don't know about the schools with town meeting if March is a little bit away, but I don't know what their capacity is.
And when does the budget have to be outprinted for the town to read?
The budget needs to be to the Budget Committee by the 26th. And at the same time, usually either we give a selectman a copy at that point so that you're reviewing it at the same time, but then the Budget Committee will come back and make recommendations potentially for changes after they meet each department. So over the next couple of months, we're going to be pretty busy.
Right. That's your favorite time of year. All right. Anything else, Ann?
Not on that, nope.
All right. So the Facebook discussion on the BOS page, I don't know if anybody's got a chance to read the latest on Halloween, and I think the biggest concerns were the comments out there. They were pretty aggressive at times. And I know we've talked before, we went to the Select Board creating the Facebook page. I think, Steve, you shared although the police don't, or please allow comments. That may have been not the avenue you would have chose to do. Is that accurate?
Well, I think if you look into it, if you're doing like a public Facebook page, like a town, a municipality, a police department, anything, you think because of First Amendment rights, you have to allow comments. I'm not sure. That would be a question for probably Attorney Rattigan.
John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm pretty sure that's what you're going to find is because of the First Amendment rights, you have to allow people to, because you have a public domain there or a public Facebook page, you have to allow people to comment on it.
I will say, I mean, despite the fact that they were pretty aggressive, they definitely showed us the sentiment of the town.
Yeah, I agree. I'm not against it per se.
At least it's a subset.
Right, right. This is true. Don't we have, isn't there somewhere at the beginning that says we can remove certain posts?
We did. And I'll say that I actually, I actually did remove a few.
You did?
I did. There were a few that used fairly inappropriate language that didn't seem, they certainly weren't productive. I think there was one comment that was like F Plymouth, you know, that didn't really contribute to the conversation. So there were a couple like that that I just.
Right.
I just, I need to caution the board about you guys removing them. What we do is we report them to Facebook and let Facebook remove them. You shouldn't be removing them at all. Just report it to Facebook. They will remove it because we get the same thing all the time at the Police Department. And literally within reporting the post, it gets taken down almost immediately.
And there, you can just do that right on the comment, right? Isn't there a?
Yep. There's something that says like, "Report this comment or report this post," or something in those lines, and they'll take care of it.
So could we just confirm that with John?
I will.
That it is a First Amendment right? I can't hurt to ask him. Alrighty. Hey, Lisa, thanks for joining us. Oops, you're on mute.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. So you know the discussions we've been having around Halloween. So I was hoping you could expound upon what you guys are doing, if you've even gotten that far. I know you were mid, or just started.
Yes, we are working on an agenda that'll go from probably around 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock. Things like a couple of storybook walks where they can trick-or-treat at the end of that. A parade where the cohorts can stay together and the spectators could be spaced out outside. Trick-or-treating some locations, again, with the cohorts and the specific grades going through that way. We have some competitions as far as pumpkin decorating, scarecrow. Pyc Pemmy U Center is going to come to the middle school wing and they're going to set up the haunted house that's usually at Pyc in the middle school wing. And that'll be six-foot social distancing right down through the hallway. The Plymouth Parks and Recreation, the Plymouth Police Department, and the Fire Department all purchased 330 Halloween bags that'll be hopefully half-full. And then they'll get to trick-or-treat throughout the building at certain locations. That's another one. Some crafts, some Halloween music.
And that's all on Friday or Saturday, Lisa?
That's Friday for everyone in the school from 1 to 3.
Okay. So no one outside or younger, under, you know, kindergarten?
Right. I mean, if you're remote, you're invited to come, and if you are homeschooled, you're invited to come. And they do come in for different services, so that could be an option. And then we have a great newsletter and reporting system emailed to parents, so that'll all be in flyer form and circulated. Costumes will be welcomed. Masks will be required. We will purchase costumes for those children that don't have costumes, though if we have a family that can't afford costumes this year, this year, we'll make sure that they have them. We're going to also do specific allergy bags. We have approximately 30 students in the building. I don't know, I think it's around 30 that have allergies that we will make sure that their trick-or-treating bag will not have whatever that, you know, peanut allergies, whatever, what have you. So they'll have what they can eat for them. Yeah, I think that's everything right now.
Anything in flux?
Any, sorry?
Anything in flux that you're still trying to figure out?
Just probably, you know, more maybe for the middle schoolers, even though, you know, some middle schools trick-or-treat, some middle schoolers do not trick-or-treat, but maybe some more activities there. And then praying for good weather, praying for good weather, because those, oh, and then possibly a pep rally. And that would be something that, when you hear pep rally, it's everybody in the gym and that kind of thing, but we'll, we'll do that in a safe way as well. The high school's doing some sort of like their traditional one, but they're doing it in classrooms and they're going to record. It's going to be very cool. So it's kind of, kind of a Zoom pep rally kind of a thing, which is very cool. And we might, we might be considering that as well.
Any concerns, Lisa, size or?
The only concern I have is just filling 330 bags of candy half-full. That's my only concern. The bags aren't huge, but we would love the kids to be able to leave with, you know, maybe if we fill it half and then they trick-or-treat throughout the locations of the school, maybe they leave with a three-quarters filled bag. So that's, I'm getting a little nervous about that and the cost of candy and all that, but hopefully with donations and different things, we can pull that off.
Oh, um, so a few businesses have said that they would donate. I'll follow back up with them tomorrow.
Lisa, do you have a rough idea of cost?
I think we, when we, so when we do the Pyc Haunted House, Plymouth Parks and Recreation always supplies the candy for that. And I would say I probably, and that's everyone downtown going through it, and then your trick-or-treaters sometimes going through it, so they get hit pretty hard. And I want to say that's around $400 or $500. I would say that that's probably what we're looking at to fill those bags at least a half-full, half-full, so.
Okay.
Where would we, where would we drop off the donations? Or how would we get it to you?
Yeah, the building's somewhat in lockdown all the time, but I could definitely meet you in the parking lot. I've met people outside of the building, or I've driven to locations to pick it up. So whatever, like, we can be super flexible.
I can help out with that, too, if anybody wants to drop it off with the Police Department or call me. I can swing by your house and I can bring it to Lisa, too. That works.
Okay.
Lisa, would you prefer candy or money?
Hmm, that's a good question.
What I'm saying is probably money for, to help, just like the businesses said they would, they would donate. So that they can go out and purchase it and know what they've got would be better than, you know, everybody bringing something different.
Yeah, that's great. That's a good idea. I would say both, you know, we could get money and candy and we'll just fill the office. I'm imagining we'll barely be able, it'll be standing room only shortly with 330 bags of trick-or-treating.
And how many of you are going to fill these bags?
Well, it's, yeah, we'll, we'll get it done. We have, we have help. And then I want to, I don't want an array of, you know, I don't want the college students filling it, you know, I'm, not that, you know, they've been great with after-school and they've had tons of testing, but I just want maybe Kelsey and I and rubber gloves. So we're probably going to be strict about that. Just don't.
I don't blame you there.
Yeah, yeah. Masks, rubber gloves.
That sounds awful.
I'm sorry. Hello. Lisa, do you need help from other departments that day?
I think, you know, the teachers have been fabulous. I would imagine that they'll, you know, Tanya's been, the principal's been very supportive, so I would imagine we're good. The aides are great. We have just great people that work at Plymouth Elementary. I heard there's a, the teachers are going to have some sort of a dress-up competition kind of thing, and I can just imagine what they're all going to come up with. They're, they're great and they make anything a good time. So I think we're good for help.
Okay. Well, let us know if you run short. We'll be glad to help out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any concern about the number of spectators or? Family, you know?
Yeah, we hadn't, we hadn't talked about that because when you are outside, then people can, can observe from afar, I suppose.
Yeah, it's more thinking parking and things like that.
Yeah, that's, that's great that you mentioned that, Mary Ann. I'll, I'll bring that back to everyone. We can talk about that because they might, you know, people might want to see the parades that go through.
Lisa, can, I don't know, somebody take a video of it and put it on like VVcam so everybody can see it that way, too?
We will. And we're gonna, Jess Dutil and Melina, they were gonna video the haunted house and get that on social media. So that'll be done as well. And then I guess WMUR emailed me and wanted to know what Plymouth's plans are, so I didn't think that was my place, but just passing on, I think they're calling around trying to get what towns are doing, and I'm happy to put a blurb that we're doing something at the school if you think that that's necessary, or if you want me to just, you know, Mary Ann, if you want to handle that and email them.
Do they email you, Lisa, or have a name?
Yes, it's just the U Local.
Okay.
That's where I got, that was what the email was from. And they just want to know the town and the plans.
Okay. So I'll mention Park and Rec as well for Saturday, I mean, for Friday. You okay with that, or?
Yeah, they have the school, Plymouth Parks, you know, Plymouth Parks and Recreation and Plymouth Elementary.
Okay.
Are planning, I guess you'd say an in-house event.
Okay.
Because.
I mean, they're probably just looking for the, you know, if you're going normal trick-or-treating, probably.
Right.
Okay.
I saw something on their website that said, it did say, like, I forget how they worded it exactly, but something along the lines of Plymouth is discouraging door-to-door trick-or-treating or something along those lines, or there was something on there about that already.
That wasn't ours, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. See if I can pull it up.
They probably just took it off of our websites.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
All right, anything else?
Were we going to talk about this proposal from Kathy?
Not yet.
No. No, we just wanted to talk about, just to get an idea of what Lisa's doing so we can be more informed and, you know, people ask, because they are asking. That type of thing.
Right now WMUR says door-to-door trick-or-treating discouraged.
Discouraged, okay. There you go.
All right, Lisa, thanks for the update.
Sure, yep. Keep us posted. If you need anything, just reach out.
All right, thank you. So that's actually all we had on the work session. I don't know if anybody else has anything? Updates from your different committees? I don't know if anybody joined the water and sewer meeting, Zoom meeting last week? I think they only had about 20 attendees. They didn't provide a lot of details, a rough timeline. They'd like to start, or they want to start July of '21 and finish December of '22. I think they have, they have to have it finished. I think by mid-'20, I gotta do my math, mid-'23, but they want it done earlier than that, obviously, for grant reasons. So it was, it was quiet. Once again, not a lot of details. It was open to resident, it was open to everybody. No real concerns were shared at that point. Don's reached out. We're going to try and get from, from the Main Street businesses, kind of a subset of probably like four business owners to kind of represent a bit. It'll be open to all business owners, but we're going to start with four or five owners, so Don's not inundated. Kind of go over some of the known concerns, some heads up to Don about what he may hear from when he has the entire group of business owners as well. Because I know there are lots of concerns out there. And I guess we'll go from there. Let's see. Economic development, I think we heard Julie last time, you know, we're looking at the airport location for the technology business park and the, the hangars for the airport are moving forward as well. So that's good stuff. Any school board meetings lately, Zach?
I couldn't make the elementary school one this past week.
Okay.
And I haven't looked at their meeting minutes, but I went to the high school one.
Yeah.
And nothing, nothing too shocking there. They've got, they're planning a sort of a virtual homecoming kind of thing that they're, they're working on, which sounds pretty fun. Obviously, there was the positive COVID test this past week that they had.
Right. Was that discussed or was that?
No, because the meeting happened the day before. That all, all went down, so that's caused them a little chaos this past week, but
Right.
I don't think there's a ton to say there.
Right.
I don't know. Lisa, is there anything else from the high school Select Board we should know about?
No, just that the pesticide, we're going to put that in committees and work on that because that'll be a policy and budget piece. So that, that's something that we'll, we'll work on, on the school grounds and see where that goes. And Joyce has been, I've been informing Joyce about that and we'll keep her posted as well.
Seems like that whole COVID issue was handled, at least from the outside, pretty quickly, fairly well.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you, you know, you call the state and you call CDC and they pretty much walk you through it. And so that's, that's what we did and, you know, they, yeah, they handled it pretty well. So they're back and running today and had a great day.
Yeah, we're happy. It was a long weekend, too.
That was perfect timing, like Kylo Welch said.
Right. Right, if it had to happen, it was a good time for it to happen.
Right.
Hi, we did have that meeting on campus yesterday.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, the.
I don't know if John or Neil, did, did either of you attend the, the university event with their town hall meeting yesterday?
I did.
Yeah, Mary Ann and I both did as well.
Yeah, and so Bill there, too?
Yeah, you happened to be one, sort of one row over from me, so.
It was, it was good. I mean, it's good to get her take, pretty much masked and concerned as we move forward into the cooler months or colder months about people staying indoors. There's lots of concern from her perspective around that, you know, keeping to your core, people who you live with as opposed to even outside family members, you know, trying to stay away from that as, as much as we can. She did talk about a vaccine, I think just one?
Yeah, that she was really thinking could be real in sort of the November timeframe.
Right. I saw one was just pulled, but I don't remember.
I don't know if that's the one.
Yeah, I don't know.
Johnson &amp; Johnson was pulled based on one of their trial patients contracting some type of illness or sickness.
Johnson &amp; Johnson. Yeah, I don't think she mentioned a name.
Didn't, no. She actually said there was two that were in trial?
That could have been, yeah. Scott, do you know anything about the trials or?
I don't, just that Johnson &amp; Johnson was pulled yesterday. The other trial is continuing on, and I want to say when I looked at it the other day, they had 500 trial patients without any side effects or other illnesses.
Well, we can hope. It was informative. It was good. I didn't learn a whole lot of new things, but vaccines, the university, you know, is handling it well. She praised most of the other universities as well as doing, I mean, we've heard a lot of other things.
She said that any university that's doing regular testing seems to be doing well and universities that aren't seem to be struggling.
Right, which makes sense.
Got to experience the university's testing facility, which was interesting.
Why is?
No, it just, it was a great experience.
Yeah, it was, yeah, we had to, if you were attending that meeting, you had to go for a COVID test prior to that, a few days prior to that. And Zach and I saw each other. And yeah, in and out, very streamlined, no lines for us. We went early in the morning and those students are probably still sleeping, but.
It did leave me wondering, as Marlin was discussing, that they have the capacity to do maybe 5,000 tests a week and they're doing more in the 3,500, 3,600 range. I wondered if they had any excess capacity that, that they had any intention to expanding to the community. I mean, I think about some of our first responders and things like that, and I wonder if there's any opportunity to have a conversation with them about sort of any of that.
Zach, first responders have access to the quick tests, so if we have an exposure or anything else like that, we can head right up to Spear and we can get the, the quick 15-minute test. They have, they have extended that.
Oh, that's great.
To all the first responders.
Was there some concern about accuracy on those quick tests? Is there?
I think there was originally, but I don't know, Tom or Scott, do you guys have any more information on the accuracy on that?
I was under the impression that they're not as accurate. Scott, do you have any further info?
No, I think the first test, the first rapid test that they had out, there was a lot of question with regards to the accuracy. I think the newer tests that have come out in the last 60 days that the hospitals have and convenient MD has are pretty accurate. When someone has gone and had the regular test and then followed up with a rapid test with regards to the physician's note, they've matched. So I think the inaccuracy was something with the first tests that were out.
Early wave kind of stuff.
Good.
That's good.
That's good to know. Yeah, even my daughter got tested last week at Spear and it was simple, you know, phone call at 9:00 a.m., scheduled for 10:30. Took about three seconds to do, so that was nice, too. We're lucky to have that right here.
Yeah, my son had a similar experience, but the nurse said to her that they, with many of the viral sort of colds and, and some of the flu stuff that's happening in the schools, they are, they're feeling the pressure to keep up with the testing.
Yeah, imagine they'll feel that for the rest of the.
The rest of, I mean, it only gets worse for clean season and that kind of thing.
Right.
We got a communication from the Lakes Region Mutual Fire Aid Chief this weekend that said that the cases in our Lakes Region Mutual Fire Aid District are the highest that they've been since May, the number of active cases. And I would say it was 25 active cases in our 39 towns and cities region. That's not good.
Do we know what percentage that makes up? Just out of curiosity.
I don't.
The one, the one thing that the New Hampshire map is showing is Rockingham and Hillsborough County are hotspots. And as of yesterday, Merrimack County went to a yellow, so it is creeping north. So I think, you know, there's more to come on that, but it definitely is moving north, and will Merrimack turn into a hotspot and then go from there?
Scott, what makes a town a hotspot?
It's the rapid increase of community spread in cases.
Okay, so some percentage of that.
There is, and I'm not sure what that is.
All right, I guess we'll adjourn for another 15 minutes, come back for a non-public work session.
We're reconvening. And I'm entertaining a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A colon 3, from numero 2. Personnel, what?
Reputation.
Personnel and reputation.
Okay, A and C, personnel and reputation.
Don't move.
Seconded.
Okay, that was a Neil, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Neil moved, Zach seconded, Zach, you vote?
Aye.
Bill? Aye. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
We're non-public.